Alright, so welcome to the AP Bio Workshop. My name is Nicole, you can call me Nico. I've been a Wizant tutor for a while now. Biology is one of the topics that I most tutor. I have an undergrad in neuroscience and then I worked for a while in a couple of fMRI labs and then I did a clinical neuroscience master's degree in UCL in London and I specialized in neuromodulation. So my specialty is neurophysiology. And right now, I am finishing medical school. I'm actually applying to specialties. So that's a little bit about me. I hope everyone has been studying. If not, the main objective today is to maybe get you to realize how far along or how far back you are in terms of the AP Bio exam. And maybe if you guys have been studying, make you feel a little bit good about what you have been studying and what you do have under your belt. So for today, there's about three different objectives. I want to present some of the most frequently asked topics. The AP exam is always divided, and you've probably seen this in your AP Bio class, is always divided into a couple of modules or a couple of themes. And some of these themes are a little bit more important than others. And so I'll be going through some of the most frequently asked topics just so that you know or kind of get a very global view of everything you've been going over in class this year. And for the second objective, we'll be delving into one of these topics in a little bit more detail. So I've chosen natural selection and speciation just because this is one of the most important topics on the AP exam. It has been for a couple of years now. And so I wanted to offer a little bit of a review just to make sure that you guys have a couple of the main terms and vocabulary under your belts. And for those of you who haven't studied, maybe it'll be just a little quick review in terms of how well you know these vocab and these main general themes. And finally, I wanted to offer a little bit of tips and tricks for exam day just based on somebody who took the exams, obviously a while ago. So things have changed. But someone who's also been taking multiple choice exams for, basically at a professional level for a really long time now because I'm finishing medical school. And this is kind of, multiple choice exams will be one of the unfortunately most frequently asked kind of skills that you'll have to do, especially if you go on to graduate school, etc. So if there, I'll go and start with the most frequently asked topics. So this pie chart basically shows what the AP exam is composed of. So all these topics on, that go around the circle are basically all the themes that you should have been studying this year in your AP Bio classes. And definitely the topics that you should look to answer and look to study before you take the exam. So chemistry of life basically refers to the structure of various different molecules, specifically water, all the different energies and different types of interactions that those molecules can have, biological macro molecules, as well as nucleic acids, just the composition of nucleic acids. Cell structure refers to the membrane and the type of membrane transport, osmo regulation, and basically kind of a little bit more the physical chemistry involved in maintaining a cell. Cellular energetics starts getting into basically what enzymes do. This is a little bit more involved in thermodynamics. If you've taken chemistry, you'll recognize a couple of things here. And basically what enzymes do, their structure, their function, their energetics, and how this relates to different types of processes, especially in cells. For example, photosynthesis. Cell cycle, which is in the bottom right-hand corner, it's a pretty, it's a topic that's pretty equivalent to cell energetics. And it refers to cell signaling, regulation, what happens if things go wrong, different types of metabolic problems that can arise. So it really goes hand in hand with cellular energetics. And then heredity, which is on the bottom left-hand corner, is something that I think a lot of people worry about because it has to do with Mendelian genetics. But you can see it's not even 10% of the exam. So this is something that even though it's not apparently that important for the AP Bio, it is something that you should maybe study on your own time because once you get into college or university, especially if you decide to be a bio major or pre-med or any of these life sciences courses, heredity in genetics is one of the most important topics in your entry Bio classes. And there are whole courses on genetics. So this is definitely something that if you can get under your belt now, now it will be of great help once you get to university. Gene expression refers to DNA and RNA structure, any mutations, how they arise, what these mutations do. So it also goes in hand with gene expression. Ecology, which is the last one on the up-left-hand corner, refers a little bit more to biodiversity, population effects. It goes a little bit in hand with AP Environmental Science. If any of you are taking AP Environmental Science, it has a lot to do with a little bit more of the population genetics of AP Environmental Science. And finally, what's in the green, what is in the green box is natural selection, which is the main topic of today because as you can see, it's about 70% of the exam. So it's the, it's the topic that's most frequently asked. And there's a lot of subtopics under natural selection. But fortunately, it's a, even though it's a very broad theme, it's a theme that's very vocab-based. So if you have a lot of this vocabulary and general ideas in mind, you're basically good to go. So without further ado, if there aren't any questions, I'll delve a little bit into natural selection. So the purpose of this is not to substitute any type of study you have been doing or that you will be doing or any type of official course you're taking. It's to maybe, for those of you who haven't studied very well, it's to kind of give you a little bit of self-awareness about where you are right now, what you have to brush up on, what you definitely have under your belt and therefore can move on. And for those of you who are really kind of fighting against the clock, who haven't been studying for whatever reason, this is maybe to allow you, to give you a little bit of an introduction in terms of the most important terms, guide you a little bit so that when you do start studying a little bit more formally, you don't get lost. So that's the main goal today. So to start off with natural selection, the main, the main issue natural selection is this idea of evolution versus natural selection. So evolution is a change in population over time versus natural selection, which really focuses on the individual organism. So it has to do with how nature selects certain types of characteristics for a particular organism. So the take-home message here, and you'll see this throughout the presentation, these take-home messages, which are the most important things to remember from the slide, are in these green boxes. So the most important thing from the slide is that natural selection acts on individual organisms versus evolution acts on entire populations. This idea of evolution, as most of you probably know, evolves or comes from Darwin. Darwin wrote a very important, well, in his time it was in a paper and his title was probably a proposal in book form called On the Origin of Species. And this is the classic example of what he was trying to talk about on In the Origin of Species, has to do with the finches and the tortoises on the Galapagos Islands. So he went to the Galapagos Islands, he spent many months there, he observed the species. And what he saw was depending on what part of the island or what island he was on, he found that the same species could have different types of characteristics physically. So he saw that finches on certain parts of the island had longer beaks than other finches, as well as tortoises. Some tortoises on certain parts of the island had longer necks than other tortoises. And so the take-home message here in terms of Darwin is, one is that Darwin is the grandfather, is the father of evolution. He's the person who really developed evolution as a formal idea. And he took it from this observational science of looking at different species and looking at how they evolved. And the take-home message here is that each species will produce more offspring that can survive. Why? Because the more offspring you have, the greater opportunity, the greater probability you have of inheriting your genes. Two, offspring will compete for limited resources. So the reason why there is natural selection is because there's not an enormous amount of resources in a particular ecosystem. And so you have to compete with other organisms in order to survive and be able to pass on your own genes. So a lot of the reason why there is natural selection is basically to have a balance between how much, how many resources we have versus how many of us can survive, live on, and pass on our genes. And finally, this is the, perhaps the most important take-home message of the day and the one that has the most to do with Darwin's idea or thesis on evolution is that the most favorable traits, which were termed the fittest traits, are more likely to survive and reproduce. Which is why we have this famous, everyone knows this famous phrase, survival of the fittest. The survival of the fittest doesn't mean that the strongest survive. It means that the most adaptable traits, the people or the organisms with the most adaptable physical traits will live the longest to reproduce and pass on those traits because they confer a particular advantage to us. So I put this picture here mostly for you to remember and have, whenever you think of Darwin, think of these tortoises. So these tortoises, as you can see, the one on the right-hand has a very long neck versus the one on the left-hand. They are both species that are endemic or they're indigenous to the Galapagos Islands. And they're both found on the Galapagos Islands. But what Darwin realized was that depending on what part of the island they were on, they ended up developing these different traits. So the tortoises on the right-hand side had very, had longer necks. And what he observed is that they tended to survive longer because they were able to reach trees that were higher up and therefore more foliage. And because they were able to reach more foliage, they were able to eat more, survive longer, reproduce, have more offspring, and pass on their genetic traits. And therefore, there were either parts of the island with more tortoises with longer necks and shorter necks, or there were parts of the island that had taller trees that had these tortoises there. And because they had adapted to that part of the island to be able to survive with longer necks. So whenever you think of natural selection, think of these tortoises. Have this idea in mind so that you can rapidly answer a question and think of an example. Another thing I wanted to mention is Lamarck. Lamarck will maybe be thrown on the AP exam as a distractor. Lamarck was a contemporary or maybe, he was a bit of a predecessor to Darwin. And what Lamarck said was, when we acquire changes, basically if you use it, you lose it. So what he said is that if you have a trait and you develop that trait so you use it, it will survive and it will pass on. So for example, if I go to the gym and I start lifting weights and I put on 10 pounds of muscle, if I continue to use my muscle, my children will inherit that muscle. And this was an idea for a while until Darwin came in and said, no. What actually happens is evolution is natural selection. And the reason why I'm mentioning Lamarck is so that if you see it on the AP exam, do not agree with Lamarck. Lamarck is wrong. This idea of the use it or lose it trait is not correct. It was replaced with Darwin's theory of natural selection and evolution. Why? Because any acquired change, for example, if I lift weights to build my muscle or if I decide to dye my hair and make it pink, those are acquired changes, especially for example, the example with lifting weights, those are acquired changes in somatic cells. And somatic cells are not passed on. Yes, somatic cells are not sex cells or gamete cells. So any type of change that you need to pass on to your offspring has to be inherited via the sexual cells or gamete cells. So any type of change that you acquire, that you induce in yourself because you eat more, you have a nice diet, you go to the gym a lot, you build your muscle, you will not inherit those traits to your children because those are changes in your somatic cells, which are not passed on sexually. So this is basically, I'm mentioning this so that if you see Lamarck on the AP exam, it's probably a distractor or it's probably meant to be there so that you think about what, what theories are wrong versus what are right. So do not agree with Lamarck. The, the use it or lose it idea is completely wrong. So we've talked about evolution, we've talked about natural selection, but what proof exists that evolution actually happens? Because it is something that's very generalized to an entire population. So the reason why we know evolution exists is because we've observed it in many different areas of science. For example, evolutionary biologists have observed due to fossil remains and due to species that are still survive, survive today, that there are various different species that share multiple traits. So for example, we know that dolphins and dogs are both mammals. And even though they're not the same species, we know that they're related in a certain way. They're from, they're under the same class of animals, they're both mammals. Why? Because somewhere along the line, they had an ancestor. And how do we know this? Because they have, they share multiple traits. Even though a dolphin and a dog are completely different, they look completely different, they even have body parts that serve completely different functions. They both give, for example, birth to live young. They don't, neither of them lay eggs. So we know that there, these are some shared traits that means that there was an ancestor along the way where they departed. So this is, this is proof from evolutionary biology or even from fossil science that there is, that there is evolution. Homologous structures, this is exactly what I'm talking about as well, means that we had a common ancestor. For example, bats and birds have different structures. One has, one has kind of a membranous wing and one has feathers. Yet they both have wings and the wings are meant to move them through the air. So even though the wings look very different and they might, if you go into maybe the day-to-day function, they might even physically function very differently, they have the same function. It's to, it's for mobility, it's to move the animal through the air. So because they have these homologous structures, that means that somewhere along the long, they had a common ancestors. This is another example that we can take from evolutionary biology, that evolution does happen. As, we can also look at, a little bit at smaller structures. We can look at molecular biology and we can look at the proportion or the amount of sequencing that we have and how much we share and take that as examples or take that as evidence that we did evolve from common ancestors. So for example, chimpanzees and humans are very different, but it's been seen that our genetic sequencing is very, very similar in a very high percentage. So because it's similar in a very high percentage, we know that we shared a common ancestor along the way. We know that humans derived from primates. So this is another example at a biological molecular level, from molecular biological level, that evolution exists. So these are just examples to have in mind. It's not the most important thing for the AP exam, but just in case they ask you, what are examples of evolution exist? Well, you have examples from evolutionary biology, you have examples from fossil science, entology, you have examples from molecular biology, that evolution did occur or does occur. So this is something that you won't be asked to, if you take an evolutionary biology course in college, you will be asked to calculate or to figure out exactly where species depart based on the phylogenetic trees. But for the AP exam, it's enough to know what a phylogenetic tree is and basically the main portions of it. So phylogenetic tree is a diagram basically. It comes in many different forms, but this is one of the most, most common examples. It's inverted period pyramid form that shows exactly where, how species are related and at what point they departed. So what you can see is that you have a very long diagonal line where you have different intersections. These intersections are called nodes. And every node, and at every node or every intersection, there is a departure, which means that there's a species that comes off of this node. So for example, where the first intersection of the two lines, there's a departure all the way to the upper left-hand corner that says jawless fish. So this jawless fish is the first node or the first species that is, that evolved from the vertebrate phylogenetic tree. And after this, we have basically all its descendants. So the cartilaginous fish, one example of a cartilaginous fish is a shark, evolved from the jawless fish. And then from there, we have the bony fish, amphibians, et cetera, as you move on the right-hand side, all the way to the top, two birds on the phylogenetic tree. So the most important thing to remember phylogenetic tree is that it's used to show the relationship and evolution among species. Two, that every intersection among lines represents a node and that every node departs a species. And three, that the farther along you get from the very first species on the chart, it means that the less related or the less, the more evolved that species is from the original ancestor. So for example, a shark or a cartilaginous fish is much more related to a jawless fish than a bird that is all the way on the right-hand, upper right-hand corner. So this is basically the most you have to know about phylogenetic trees. And it's another way basically to show evolution. Fine, I want to move on now to genetic variability. So genetic variability refers to the differences in species. So species acquire their differences in various different ways. They acquire their differences in errors due to DNA polymerase. They acquire changes in DNA due to damage, physical damage from, from environmental causes. But the take-home message here is that any type of, i.e. any type of mutation, any type of change, whatever mechanism it may be produced by, will induce new variations and alleles, which can then increase the variability or can increase the changes within a particular environment or a particular species. So differences in species are caused not just by mutations, but also by the mixing of genes through sexual reproduction. So the take-home message here is that evolution can result from mutations, but it can also result from many years of mixing different genetic pools to get different species or to increase this variability. So one of the greatest examples that you've probably been over in your AP Environmental, AP Biology classes, I'm sorry, or I'm hoping that you have gone over in your AP Bio classes, is this famous example of the peppered moth in England. So during the Industrial Revolution, so during the 1800s in England, England basically started to have an industrial revolution in the north of the country. So they started building factories and people started leading agricultural work, integrating into factories, and cities started expanding. So this happened really in the north of England. The south of England remained highly agricultural. And the reason why this historical event is important to biology is because it's a great example of how genetic variability came into play. So in England, there's a population of moths called the peppered moth, which is the one on the right-hand side. It's a moth that has both black and white, called peppered because it looks like it's, it's been salted. And there's another moth which is basically a black moth. And so what happened during the Industrial Revolution is that before the Industrial Revolution, there was basically a one-to-one ratio between these two moths. Their populations were basically equal. After the Industrial Revolution, or a couple of years after, once the factories had been built and contamination increased, so these factories burned coal, coal created soot, the soot settled on the trees and the tree bark started changing color. So it changed color from a light gray to a darker gray, like you can see in the, in the picture. And so what happened was that the darker gray color worked perfectly well for camouflaging the darker moth, as you can see on the left-hand side, but it didn't work very well to camouflage these lighter colored moths, as you can see on the right-hand side. So what happened is that the peppered moth started to die off because it became very easy targets for the local, for the local predators. So for birds and other species that depended on moths as their main food supply. And so as the, as the peppered moth started declining in population because it became easier targets, the black moth started increasing in numbers. They started increasing in numbers because they survived these predators, they were able to camouflage more because they survived, there are more of them because there are more of them, they reproduced easily, and basically they passed on their genes. And eventually, the black moth population overtook the peppered moth population in the north of England versus the south of England where basically populations remain in a one-to-one ratio. There wasn't any change because there wasn't any local contaminants because the majority distribution happened in the north. So this is a very classic example of genetic variability. The reason why is that there was a random mutation that was produced in the black moth that allowed them to survive longer because they weren't dying off because they weren't being preyed upon. And because there was a random mutation that caused, well, because it combined with both the environmental stressor of basically allowing them to camouflage better to the soot and because they passed on their genes, this random mutation was basically combined into the gene population, passed on to the next generation, combined with the environmental pressure of the soot on the tree bark, darker color became an adaptation, allowed these moths to survive, allowed them to camouflage better with the trees. And eventually, natural selection favored this variation because they survived much easier than the white moth. The idea here is that you, what you need to understand is that natural, we're talking about natural selection here because we're talking about how this affected moths, so individual organisms. And we were talking about natural selection and how natural, natural selection comes into play. So the idea of natural selection is that it needs both an environmental pressure, which in this case was the soot, it was the contamination in the local environment that produced this, this ability for the black moth to survive longer because they weren't preyed upon easily by the birds, as well as a genetic variation. In this case, the fact that the black moth passed on their genes created a greater population or a greater frequency of this allele in the local moth population, which basically outnumbered any of these white alleles for the peppered moth. So the idea to remember here is that natural, natural selection, I'm sorry, means that the best moth with a little push wins. Meaning, the most fit moth, in this case, the black moth with the best genes because they survive longer, with a little push, meaning with a little bit of help, something that confers some type of advantage to you in the environment, will allow you to survive longer and pass on your genes. And this is the classic example of natural selection that you will definitely see on the AP exam if they ask you any questions having to do with natural selection. So now we're going to move on to the second topic, which is speciation. So species. So what, what do we mean about a species? So if you look up to the upper-left-hand corner, you'll see this kind of very strange-looking dog. It's a dog that has basically the head of a pitbull and the body of a kind of a chihuahua or maybe a dash hound. So this dog is a product of the intermixing or the interspeciation of a chihuahua and a pitbull. And this is why they created this dog. Yet the reason why this dog was able to be bred was because even though a chihuahua is physically very different than a pitbull, they're both dogs, they're both the same species. They share enough genetic variation where if you try to interbreed them, they will produce viable offspring. Versus what you see in the bottom-right-hand corner, which is basically if you, if you breed a horse and a donkey, you will get a mule. But a mule is not considered a species because mules are sterile. So if you try to breed two different mules, you'll never be able to breed them because they're both sterile. So this is the main idea behind a species. A species is the ability, or what defines a species is the ability to mate and produce viable offspring, meaning that the offspring survive, but that those offspring that survive are then able to mate among themselves and reproduce again. So that's what defines a species, the ability to reproduce among different generations. Which is why the weird-looking dog would be considered a species. And the mule, even though you can see mules and they're alive and they survive, cannot reproduce with another mule. So therefore, it's not considered its own species. And finally, we advance over to the Hardy-Weinberg equation. So this is potentially quote-unquote the most complicated topic that has to do with natural selection on the AP exam because it involves equations and we have equations, we get a little bit nervous, especially in biology. But there's no reason to get nervous because I, the reason they ask you this on the AP Environmental, AP, sorry, AP Bio exam is so that you have a better understanding of allele frequencies and inheritance. So they might ask you to calculate something, but most likely thing is that they'll ask you to recognize the Hardy-Weinberg equation, to tell you what the criteria to apply to Hardy-Weinberg equations are and what each of the variables mean. So it is worth memorizing them and knowing what each of the variables mean, but I wouldn't be so worried in terms of how you could calculate things on the exam. So what is the Hardy-Weinberg equation? The Hardy-Weinberg equation comes from an idea that is, and it's used to determine genetic variation within populations. So there's two different equations. The first one is P plus Q equals 1. So the two different variables, they, they each refer to different alleles. So P refers to the frequency of the dominant allele and Q refers to the frequency of recessive allele. So if they ask you something on the exam, they'll probably ask you, when do you use this? And what do the variables mean? But basically, they might ask you a question where they're asking you to calculate or they're asking you what the frequency of a particular allele is. So if they ever ask you to calculate something, it'll be very easy because it's just a question of rearranging this algebraically to find the missing variable. But the most likely thing is that they'll ask you or they'll refer to one of these variables and have you know that the P is the frequency of the dominant allele and Q is the frequency of the recessive allele. The other equation that has to do with the Hardy-Weinberg idea or the Hardy-Weinberg equation is P squared plus 2PQ plus Q squared equals 1. Where P squared is the frequency of a homozygous dominant. So a homozygous dominant is, is an animal or is a human that has two alleles for the dominant trait. So for example, we all know that black hair is a dominant trait over blonde hair. So a human with homo, that is homozygous dominant for brown hair means he has two alleles for the brown hair. There's no way that he can possibly pass on genes to his offspring for blonde hair because he's a dominant, homozygous dominant. Usually, the dominant traits are represented with capital letters. For example, big B, big B for brown hair, brown hair. But sometimes they're not. So this is, well, usually, they'll usually tell you what the letters stand for, but in general, the, in genetics, when we talk about genetics and if you ever take a genetics class, the standard is that dominant, is that, is that capital letters represent dominant traits and lowercase letters represent recessive traits. So the 2PQ stands for a heterozygote. So a heterozygote is a, is an individual that has an allele for the dominant trait and an allele for the recessive trait. So for example, I might have brown hair, but I might have, I might be a heterozygote, meaning I have one allele for the dominant trait, so I have a big B for brown hair, and I have a little b for blonde hair, for the recessive trait. Meaning that I could technically pass on alleles with genetic information to my offspring for blonde hair. And that's a heterozygote. And finally, Q squared is, represents the homozygous recessive. So homozygous recessive are individuals that have two alleles for the recessive trait. So for example, if blonde hair is a recessive trait and we represent it with little b, little b, or lowercase b, lowercase b, a homozygous recessive would be an individual that has the genotype of lowercase b, lowercase b because he only has genetic information for blonde hair, meaning he will only pass on for his offspring, he will only pass on alleles for blonde hair. So this is what the variables mean in the Hardy Weinberg equation and they're used to kind of determine genetic variation in entire populations. So because we're referring to entire populations and not individuals, we need to fulfill a certain amount of criteria in order to use the Hardy Weinberg equation. So you can't just use it willy nilly in whatever situation. So there's five main criteria and these are definitely criteria that you should memorize. This is definitely something that they can definitely ask on the AP exam, either as a more complicated question or as a very direct kind of forward question, and it's something that you can easily get wrong on the AP exam and that is really unfortunate because it's an easy question to answer. So the Hardy Weinberg equation revert, sorry, is always applied to non-evolving populations. So they're populations that are stagnant, they do not change over time. So because they refer to this type of population, you have to fulfill five different criteria in order to apply it. So the criteria that you have to use are number one, that it applies to a large population. So for example, if I had a jar of frogs in my room as my pets, I wouldn't be able to use the Hardy Weinberg equation because a jar of frogs only has three frogs. It's a very small population. So you wouldn't be able to use it there, you would have to use it in a very large population. So we're talking about hundreds of individuals. Two, the population cannot have mutations, meaning that if I were working in a lab and I had a, I was working with over 500 different rats, so it's a very large population, and all my rats, the wild type, or the natural way these rats are born are that they have white fur and red eyes. But I had about 30 individuals in my 500 individual population that had green eyes and white fur. I wouldn't be able to use that population because obviously there's a mutation. Something happened in the inbreeding of these rats that caused some of these rats to be born with green eyes. But that's not the wild type, that's a mutation. So that's something that has to be fulfilled, that there are no mutations in a population. The third criteria is that there's no immigration or emigration. This means, in terms of immigration, it means that if you were studying, for example, a population of frogs in a lake, you would have to be very sure that there were no frogs from neighboring lakes that were infiltrating, that were joining this population of frogs. You'd have to be relatively sure that this was a lake where there was no frogs from neighboring areas that were coming in. And emigration means the opposite. You have to be sure that there's, if you were studying the same frogs in a lake, the frogs were not continuously leaving the lake. They were there, you know, they're born there, they breed there, they die there and there's no kind of, there's no kind of departure of the animals from their natural ecosystem. Four, random mating. You have to be relatively sure if you're applying to Hardy Weinberg population, but these are groups of animals, individuals that randomly mate. Meaning, for example, all these different types of animals, dragonflies, mammals in the wild, they randomly mate. They find each other during certain periods of the year, they mate and then they leave each other. So random mating wouldn't apply, for example, for the same example of the frogs that you have in a jar in your room. That's not random mating because there's only three frogs, so they're going to interbreed among themselves. They're not going out into a lake and just mating naturally with whatever other frogs they find. So you have to be sure that it's a population that's big enough and that's wild enough that has this random mating. And finally, no natural selection. What no natural selection refers to is exactly the examples we came from. So for example, in this example of the moth in northern England, you wouldn't be able to use the Hardy Weinberg equation because it was very clear that throughout time there was natural selection. The black moths were naturally selected from because they survive longer. They conferred better genes that allowed the moths to survive longer and they were able to adapt and camouflage with their environment. Therefore, they survive longer and they pass on their genes, they had fitter genes. So you'd have to make sure that your population had no natural selection. So these are the five criteria that are necessary and absolutely non-negotiable for applying the Hardy Weinberg equation. So the two prior equations that we used. If any of these are broken, you cannot apply the Hardy Weinberg equation or theory because it's a non-evolving, it's an evolving population, it's a changing population. And the Hardy Weinberg represents non-evolving or non-changing situation. So that's basically the end of the very quick review on natural selection. So as I said, it isn't meant to be a substitute for you studying these topics or any other topic on the AP exam. It was meant to be kind of a quick review so that you know how far along you've gotten in this topic, which is the most important topic for the AP exam, at least it has been the past couple of years. And for those of you who haven't been able to study much, maybe this will offer you a bit of guidance in terms of what to study and what's maybe not so important in terms of natural selection topic. And maybe it will allow you to study in a more efficient way. So that was the main purpose. I hope it was helpful. What I want to do next, I want to offer a couple of practice questions so that you guys, one, test your knowledge on the information we just went over. So how well you were paying attention, how much you retained, how much you understood and what wasn't clear. Maybe we can clarify some things that wasn't very, wasn't very clear. And two, it's also meant to test your knowledge on things we didn't go over today during the presentation. So I didn't present all the topics on natural selection because it wouldn't be possible in an hour, but there are some topics that I'll be presenting via the practice questions that you should probably know by now. So if there aren't any questions, I'll start the practice questions and these were taken from the Princeton Review Prep. So these are questions that are pretty well done, they're pretty representative of what you'll see on the AP exam, both in difficulty and in the type of question. So the first question, and I'll read them out loud and I'll give you about a minute to answer. You can send your answers through the chat in, you know, in letter format and then we'll go over the correct answer and we'll explain why the answer was correct, alright? So the eye structures of mammals and cephalopods, such as squid, evolved independently to perform very similar functions and have similar structures. This evolution is an example of which of the following? A, allopathic speciation, B, centipatric association, C, divergent evolution, or C, convergent evolution? So I'll give you a bit of time, I'll give you one minute to answer this. So I'm starting to see a couple of examples, a couple of answers, sorry, D. D, most people are going with convergent evolution. So I'll give a little bit more time for those of you who haven't had time to study this. D, most people are answering D. So I don't know how many of you there are, but most people are answering D. D. Okay, so I'll give about 10 seconds more. Okay, so most of you answered, actually all of you answered D, which is the correct answer. The correct answer is convergent evolution. So the reason why, for those of you who didn't participate or who got it wrong, or for those of you who guessed, convergent evolution basically refers to similar selective pressures that are placed on different species that lead to different species or to different, completely different classes of animals developing similar structures with similar functions. So for example, here we're talking, we're talking about a cephalopod, a squid and mammals. Both mammals and squid have eyes, even though they're very different. But because even though squids and mammals are completely different classes of animals, they both eventually along their lines of evolution had some type of environmental pressure, i.e. they were receiving light waves that made them have to be able to develop a certain structure that would allow them to see, would allow them to hunt, would allow them to react to the flight and be able to improve their survival. And so because this happened, they developed eye structures. Even though, like I said, the eye of the squid looks very different than an eye on a mammal, they both have the same function. They're meant to receive light waves, interpret it and be able to visually scan their environment. So somewhere along the line, what convergent evolution means or convergent speciation means is that two classes of mammals received a certain amount of pressure that was similar that allowed them to evolve structures that are functionally similar. So this has a lot to do, and somebody asked me this question along the way to go over the different types of speciation. So the different types of speciation, I'll go over it very quickly because this is a topic that will be asked on the AP exam and I wanted to take advantage of this question to not go, to go over not just the answer to this question, but to go over speciation in general. So allopathic speciation is speciation or differentiation in animals or in humans that happens when two populations of the same species become isolated from each other, yeah? Due to geographic changes. So for example, if there was a lake with frogs and all of a sudden there was an earthquake that divided this lake and the frogs became divided to two populations, they're divided by a huge amount of rocks and different barriers and over time, they weren't able to cross over to the other side of the mountain. That means that allopathic speciation evolved. There was a physical change in the environment, there was literally a physical barrier that separated these animals or separated the species that eventually allowed, did not allow them to ever reproduce again together and created two different species. Versus, versus what's called centipatric sympathy or centipatric speciation, it's the same thing. This is a term that refers to organisms whose ranges overlap so that they occur together. So for example, these are also called sister species in certain books and it's basically a distribution that results from organisms coming together. Okay, so it's basically the opposite of allopathic speciation. And finally, divergent evolution, which is the other term that we saw in these answers. Divergent evolution means that a related species with a unique trait results due to different environmental or selective pressures. So this is exactly what happened on the Galapagos Islands. So the finches on the Galapagos Islands, due to different environmental pressures, evolved different lengths of beaks. So certain finches that were, let's say, on the north part of the island versus species, which is finches that were on the south part of the island, maybe the ones in the north part of the island, the only way they were to get food was if they were able to place their beak in very small holes. And therefore, over time, this natural or this environmental pressure caused them to evolve very long beaks versus the finches in the south of the island, but they necessarily have to do this, maybe they had access to greater amount of insects in open plains or different types of trees that weren't so narrow, didn't develop these long beaks because it wasn't necessarily a trait that was adaptive to them. So this is what's evolved, this is what we refer to divergent evolution. A same species becomes two different species due to an environmental pressure that is put on them to evolve and adapt this trait. So this is a different type of speciation that we can see and this was what this question was meant for you to kind of go over. It was kind of meant for you to go over what vocabulary in terms of speciation you have down and what you have to review. So we'll go over the second question now. This question has to do with the moth example. So if you paid attention to the moth example, you'll do relatively well on this question. It's a question with a couple of different parts, so pay attention. During the industrial revolution, a major change was observed in many insect species due to the mass production and deposition of stuff around cities. This occurred with the spotted moth population. Ecological surveys were performed with a 100-year interval. The results of the experiments are shown below. So this graph, so this is another thing that will happen on the AP exam. The AP exam is not just going to test how much you've memorized in terms of AP biology, it will test how much you can analyze. So it's going to test your abilities to do basic analysis of charts, of graphs, of different experiments. So if you've had, if you haven't had practice with this in a certain amount of time, maybe you should go over reading pie graphs, bar charts, analyzing, you know, converting things from decimal form to whole number form because it'll definitely be something that you'll be testing on the AP exam. So this is the graph that refers to the question above or to the episode above. You can see that on the left hand chart, on the left hand side, you have white-bodied peppered moths, the population. So the horizontal axis represents the different types of moths. So white-bodied peppered moth, black-bodied peppered moth, long-tailed moth. The different colors on the bar charts represent the different years. So the lighter blue color represents 1802 and the darker blue color represents 1902. So like the question, like the, like the like the question said, there's a 100-year interval in between these surveys. And the vertical axis, even though it's not labeled, represents the population of moths per kilometer squared in the thousands, okay? So now to the first question. So the first question having to do with this particular vignette is what type of selection is represented by the results of this study? A, stabilizing selection, B, directional selection, C, disruptive selection, or D, divergent selection? So I'll give you a minute to answer this. I don't know if you want me to go back to the bar graph. Let me know if you want me to toggle back and forth. So I'm getting a lot of answers, most of them Bs, a couple of As. B, B, most people are putting B, a couple of people are putting A. So I'll give you a couple, about 20 seconds more. Let me know if anybody wants me to toggle back to the bar graph or toggle back to the example idea. Again, this is the example of the moth, so think back to what we just went over. So about 10 seconds more for those of you who are still thinking. B, so most people answered B. And B is the correct answer. And the reason why the answer is directional selection is because we're looking at the transition from black to white. So this is where it's, if you can't remember the classic example of the moth and you don't remember your vocabulary in terms of variability, you can always refer back in this particular question to the graph. Because the graph, basically, what you had to be able to look at was how the numbers of black moths versus white moths changed from 1802 to 1902. So we're over this 100-year period. And this is an example of directional selection because the mode of natural selection was an extreme, an extreme phenotype basically was favored over others. And this causing allele frequency over change. So directional selection is when there's one particular phenotype, which in this case was the black-colored moth or the black color in the moth, was favored over many, many years over the white moth. And it was so favored that it became integrated as into the allele frequency shift, meaning it completely changed the population dynamics and population numbers over an entire century. So if we go back to the chart, you can see that the white-bodied peppered moth in 1802 vastly outnumbered the peppered moth in 1902, which, this is a little bit different than the classic example. The classic example will always tell you that it was a one-to-one ratio. This example makes it a little bit undistributed, distributes it in a different way, obviously, because it wants you to get to this directional selection answer. But there was a greater population of white-bodied moths than peppered moths. So there's about 35,000 white-bodied peppered moths per kilometer squared in 1802 versus about, I don't know, 5,000 peppered moths per kilometer squared in 1802. Versus 1902, so 100 years later, you can see that the black-bodied peppered moth greatly increased the number, so it was 35, almost 35,000, so almost 3,000 more black-bodied peppered moths 100 years later versus what it was 100 years before. So you can see that there was definitely an increase. So you can basically draw a line from what happened, from their numbers in 1802 to 1902 versus what happened with the white moth, which was completely the opposite. There was about 35,000 white moths per kilometer squared in 1802. And over a 100-year period, as they were preyed upon more easily by birds, their numbers decreased until they reached in 1902. Basically, there was no, there was a change to 5,000. So basically, you can draw direct lines and you can see how white-bodied peppered moth decreased and black-bodied peppered moth increased. And this is an example of directional selection because a particular phenotype, in this case, the black-colored, was favored much more highly than the white-colored moth and therefore, there was a complete allele frequency shift where these populations, as you can see in the bar graphs, basically reversed the populations for both moths. The other thing I want to go over is basically what it means, what it means a bit to understand these charts. So you should be able to read bar charts at this point relatively easily. So there'll always be a horizontal axis and a vertical axis and I apologize for those of you who think this is very basic, but these are very, very basic skills that you should have down pat for the AP bio exam, which are not necessarily selective, they're not necessarily respective to the AP biology exam. These are things that if you're taking an AP math exam, if you're taking AP environmental, if you're taking AP chemistry, you're going to see this type of questions where they're basically just testing you on your ability to read charts and graphs and analyze information. And this is one of these questions. So it is asking you a bit about your natural selection vocabulary because it's asking you what directional selection is. But it's also asking you to just interpret a chart. So this is something that you should be able to do and if not, maybe you should go over, this is something you can see in a basic algebra book, you can see in the basic map, basic introduction to math concepts book, just how to read these different types of charts. So now we're going to go, this is, so refraining back to the same vignette, we're still talking about the moth and we're still referring back to this graph. We're now going to this question, which is asking you, which of the following statements best explains the data? So A, as time passed from 1802 to 1902, the frequency of white-bodied peppered moth increased and black-bodied peppered moth decreased. B, as time passed from 1802 to 1902, the frequency of white-bodied peppered moth decreased and black-bodied peppered moth increased. C, as time passed on, the frequency of both types of moth increased. Or D, as time passed on, the frequency of both types of moth decreased. So I'll give you a minute and I'll go back. So the first one is whites increase, blacks decrease. B is whites decrease, blacks increase. C is that they both increase and D is that they both decrease. And for those of you who don't remember the graph, here is And for those of you who don't remember the graph, here it is. I'll leave it on for 10 seconds. So I'm seeing a lot of Bs. Let me know if you want me to go back to the, to the slide with the answers. So B, a lot of Bs. I'll give you about 10 more seconds. B, a lot of Bs. So five more seconds for those of you who are still thinking. And I'll go back to the questions, just that you see them. All right. So for those of you who answered B, nice job. It's the correct answer. And the reason why, it basically goes back to everything I just given you this whole spiel about. It's about reading the graph. So you can see that this is really something they'll test you on in multiple different ways. They'll hide it among the vocabulary question. They'll ask you outright, just read me, what does the chart say? Please interpret it for me. So they'll ask you either outright or they'll hide it. So basically, knowing how to read these very basic types of data analysis is really, really important. So what you can see basically is that in 1802 versus 1902, there was a decrease of white-bodied peppered moth from 1802 to 1902 versus what happened with the black-bodied peppered moth, which basically increased over time. So these are the lines I was drawing just a minute ago. In terms of white-bodied peppered moth, 1802 because of this light-colored, blue color here, there was, there was a lot, there's about 35,000 of them over time. So if we get closer to this darker, blue-colored bar graph, basically, they decreased at about 30,000. Versus the black-bodied peppered moth that you can see here labeled on the horizontal axis, started off with about only 5,000 in 1802, which is labeled because it's the lighter colored blue. And over time, in this bar, in this bar here, that is the darker colored blue, which represents 1902, you can always refer back to the legends if you forget. So always look to the legends. That's another tip and trick. Before you even start analyzing a graph, read the x-axis, read the y-axis, look if there's different colors, look if there's different types of figurines or different types of like forms. Maybe they won't do different colors, but because the AP exam, well, when I took it, which was like 1,000 years ago, there was, it was all black and white. So there weren't any colors, but they, they would have done something like they maybe would have put, instead of putting a light colored blue, they maybe would have put like dashed marks. And instead of putting a dark blue, maybe they would have put like a solid, just a solid black bar. So look not just for changes in color, look for changes in texture or changes in pattern. And always refer back to the legend. So you can see that for the black-bodied peppered moth, basically, the opposite happened. Their populations increased. So that's why answer B. From 1802 to 1902, the frequency of white-bodied peppered moths decreased and black-bodied peppered moth increased. So nice job for those of you who chose B. So this is the last question that has to do with this vignette of the moths. And the question asks, why was the population of long-tailed moths also surveyed in this study? A, variations in the environment were expected to alter the population of long-tailed moths. B, long-tailed moths were included as a control because they were not expected to change appreciably due to changes associated with the industrial revolution. C, the peppered moth did not have a long enough time to visualize the change. Or D, long-tailed moths were poisoned by the coal and therefore suffered drastic population loss. So a lot of you are answering, a lot of you are answering B. I'll give you a little, I'll give you about a minute. So for those of you who are confused and, and who are saying right now, like, what, what about the long-tailed moths? We talked about black moths and these white moths and the peppered moth and all this. We didn't talk about long-tailed moths? I'll go back to the graph. So you can see long-tailed moths are labeled here on the right-hand side. And you can see that their population basically didn't change. So there's no, this wouldn't, this wouldn't be statistically significant, basically. So in 1802 versus 1902, the long-tailed moths, their numbers basically stayed around the same, almost 40,000. So this is what they're referring to. They're referring to these moths. So why were these moths included in this experiment if they didn't change and what we care about are these other two moths? So a lot of you are answering B. I got a couple of As. I'll go back to the question. So Bs, a couple of As. Most of you are answering B. I'll give you about 10 more seconds. B. Okay. So for those of you who answered B, congratulations. So long-tailed moths were included as a control. Okay. So the reason why they're asking you this is they're basically, they're not testing your knowledge on whether or not you read your AP bio book really well, or that you, you know, you just cram the last minute and you know this classic example of the moths in northern England. They're not really asking you anything having to do with moths. They're asking you basically if you know the very basics of how to set up a basic experimental design. A classic experimental design will always have your two test groups and you'll always have a control. For those of you who don't know, a control is a group that you don't change. It's the variable that you maintain the same. It's what you don't expect to change. It's what you compare your changes to. And the reason why this is done is because if you really want to know if your independent variable is causing, is actually changing and it's changing to, to whatever pressure or whatever exposure you're giving it, if you want to make sure that it's actually changing due to the exposure and not to some other type of random event, you have to have a control group. Because your controlled group naturally will never change because you're not exposing it to anything. So because the long-tailed moths were probably, I don't know, they were probably a different color. They were, let's say that they were yellow. Because long-tailed moths were yellow, they weren't really affected by the soot. Then maybe they, they were able to camouflage a little bit better before the trees became dark because yellow is a lighter color. But it didn't necessarily change, as you can see by the bar graph, the numbers. Maybe yellow was a color that camouflaged equally well on certain trees that weren't as contaminated as others. And therefore, their population remained the same. They weren't expected to change because their color didn't dictate the adaptability and their survival. And therefore, they were surveyed in order to see whether soot really was, or this contamination and this bark color and the ability to camouflage really was the environmental effect that allowed these frequency changes to occur over time. And so that's why they were included. So as you can see, this question is really not asking you to know much about natural selection. It's asking you to know a lot about, or very little, about a basic experimental setup. So that was the last question having to do with natural selection and the moths and experimental setups. I want to ask you now a question having to do with, oh, actually, there's one more question. Sorry. There's one more question having to do with the moth. So this is it. It's how would the results of the study have been different if factories produced white or light gray ash rather than black? So basically, if it was reversed, rather than having factories produce black soot, if they had produced some type of contaminant that was white-colored, how would the results of the study change? A, there would be no change to the result. B, there would, there would have been an added selection pressure for more white-bodied spotted moths and against black spotted 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 moths. C, there would have been added selection pressure for more black-bodied spotted moths and against white spotted spotted moths. Or there would have been an increase in the frequency of both type of moths. So I'll give you a minute. We're a little bit less than a minute, so we can get to the other questions. So some of you are answering B, B. So I see that this is taking a little bit longer. So this is testing your knowledge again on experimental setups and it's testing your knowledge on inference. It's, it's, they're testing you really on, on how well are you, how well do you do on, on hypothesis? How well are you doing at kind of inferring things? And say, if I had, if I, if I had these results, what would I expect if I changed something? This is also testing kind of your knowledge and your ability to manipulate different variables. So again, it doesn't really have anything to do with natural selection and with moths. It has to do with basic experimental design understanding. So I'm getting a lot of Bs. Getting a lot of Bs. So I'll give you about 10 seconds more, 20 seconds more. Okay. So the answer is indeed B. I know they've all been B, but this wasn't done on purpose. It was. So the reason why it's B, so there would have been added selection pressure for more white-spotted moths and against black-spotted moth, meaning that white-spotted moths would survive longer and they would increase their numbers versus black-spotted moths would have decreased their number. And the reason why is the correct answer is that if the color of the ash produced were light, then this would favor the, what the, the white-spotted peppered moth. Why? Because the white-spotted peppered moth is light. So that means that the opposite would have happened. The white-spotted peppered moth would have been able to camouflage better against the bark versus the black moth that would have stand out, they would have stand out, stood out more. They would have been eaten relatively easily by the birds. And therefore, the white-spotted peppered moth would have survived longer to pass on its genes, eventually create an allele frequency shift towards the other, towards the other side. So basically, what you could have expected on these graphs was the opposite. So the only thing they're testing you is there is your ability to take information and infer things from it, not necessarily how much you know about natural selection. So I'm going to ask you a couple more questions. I think I have two or three more questions. And let me know if this is helpful or if it's not. Or if you guys want me to get to the tips and tricks. But this question has to do now with frequencies. So the question asks, a cruise ship with 500 people on board crashes on the deserted island. They like the island so much, they decide to stay. There is a small number of people on board with red hair. The red hair is an autonomic recessive trait. Red hair provides no increase to fitness. So the first question having to do with this vignette is what is the most likely to occur with respect to the number of red-haired individuals on the island? A, no change to their number over time. B, convergent evolution, all people would become red-haired. C, the population of red-haired people will increase over time. Or D, red-haired people will decrease in number over time. So I'll give you about a minute. So people want me to go back to the scenario. So I'll go back. So basically, there's 500 people, there's a, a small number of red-haired people on this boat and red hair is an autonomic recessive trait. And they get stranded on the island and they decide to stay. That's basically what happens. And now the question is, what's going to happen to the population of red-haired people? So is it going to increase? Is it going to decrease? Are they going to change the same? Basically, are the, are the, are the options? So 10 more seconds. Okay. So I got a couple of Bs, a couple of Bs. So for those of you who were tired of answering B, surprise, it's a B. Red-haired people will decrease their number over time. And the reason why this is the answer is that, oops, sorry, is that basically, so if we know that, if they're telling you, and we know this is true in real life, but the most important thing that they're telling you, that red hair is an autonomic recessive trait. What it means here is that the number of homozygous recessives, so the number of these red-haired individuals, right? That are, that have, let's say that red hair is represented by little r, little r. So these homozygous recessives over time, because one, there's very few of them, and two, it's a recessive trait, they will become fewer as the allele is mixed with more dominant hair color. So for example, because you need two recessive alleles to actually manifest the, the red-haired phenotype, you have to, if you want to have red-haired children, you would have to breed or you would have to have children with somebody that had, that had at least one allele for the red hair and you would have to have one allele for the recessive red hair trait. And because it's something that's very infrequent, that would be, and there's very few of these red-haired people on the island, this would be very unlikely, not impossible, but very unlikely. So as time goes on, because there's obviously very few people on the island and there's very few choices for reproduction and for spouses or for, or for sexual partners, the likelihood that these people that are less in number will intermix or will interbreed with people that have dominant traits, i.e. black hair or brown hair, is greater. And therefore, they will start, the homozygous recesses will become fewer in number because they will only pass on one of their alleles that will mix with a dominant allele from somebody who has a darker haired color. So over time, the like, the probability is greater that their numbers will go down, that they will, then, then it will be that they will remain the same. So this has to do with a general, what they're testing you here is one, your general understanding of what recessive and dominant traits are and how they're inherited. So what, how are, how are, what, what does it mean to have a recessive trait? And what does it take to actually manifest it? So I could have a recessive allele that doesn't mean, for the red-haired, for the red-haired trait, that doesn't mean I, I have red hair. It just means that I have an allele in my genotype that means that if I ever marry somebody or ever, if I decide to have children with a red-haired person, I would be able to contribute one, potentially due to random genetic selection, one allele for the red hair that might mix with this person's recessive allele. And we might have a red-haired offspring. We might not however, because I only have one of these alleles. So because there's very few of these homozygous on the island and in general, there's very few red-haired people in the world anyway, the likelihood is that their numbers will decrease over time. So the second, this question also refers back to the cruise ship example or vignette. And the answer, the question asks, population does not occur when in equilibrium by the Hardy-Wineberg definition. What to the following does not support the claim that evolution will occur in this population? So basically, it's asking you which of these does not fulfill the Hardy-Wineberg criteria? So A, the situation describes a small population. B, mutations occur in this population. C, people usually do not mate randomly, or D, natural selection pressures do not exist on this island. So I'll give you about a minute. So I know this, the wording is a bit weird. The reason why it's wordy like this is that one, you'll definitely come across double negatives and stuff on the AP exam. I think this was much more frequent when I took the AP exam. This was classic, which one is false, which one does not, which one is not indicative. And it was kind of confusing because it was asking you to kind of do a double negative. I think this is less frequent now. But it still happens. So it's, it's very annoying. But it's something you have to get used to. So basically, what this is asking you is to go over in your mind, what are the five criteria for the Hardy-Wineberg definition or the Hardy-Wineberg theory, which is basically that it only applies to non-evolving populations. And so basically, which of the following does not support evolution? So maybe the better way to go about it is which, which is, which are, which are the followings, which of the following answers do support evolution? So what are things that could be, take place or could exist that would support evolution? And basically, what you, what you end up with or what does not support evolution is the answer. And yes, for those of you that are looking at, what, what was, I was supposed to put here is population evolution. But yes. Okay. So most of you are answering B. And the correct answer is D. And the reason why D is the correct answer is that natural selection pressures do not exist on this island. That's the only choice that does not predict evolution on the island because it supports the Hardy-Wineberg principle. Yeah? So if we're talking, if we're saying that evolution will occur on the island, natural selection pressures, saying that natural selection pressures don't exist on the island actually agrees with the Hardy-Wineberg principle. And because this selection or this answer, this D, this, this item agrees with the Hardy-Wineberg select, um, principle, it means that we're agreeing with the idea that the Hardy-Wineberg idea, um, theory supports, which is that that particular evolution that we're applying criteria to does not change, does not evolve. And the vignette is telling you the opposite. The vignette is telling you that this, this particular island with these people that are on it will evolve. So we want to de-select or we want to eliminate whatever answer supports the Hardy-Wineberg principle and supports non-evolving population. And the only one that agrees with the Hardy-Wineberg principle is the statement that says natural selection pressures do not exist on the island. Because if this, if there's a small population, then there will definitely be evolution or genetic change. If mutations occur in the population, that there will definitely be evolution. And if people usually do not rate, mate randomly, randomly, this will also support evolution. So the only one that isn't supporting. So the only one that doesn't support evolution, i.e. agrees with the Hardy-Wineberg, is the statement that there are no natural selection pressures on the island, which is one of the criteria for the Hardy-Wineberg. It was the fifth criteria, that there's, has to be no natural selection in order for you to apply the Hardy-Wineberg equation. So I know that was very convoluted, but I wanted to do it because this is, this is not a very difficult question. You guys, actually, most of you answered it right, and it's because most of you understand the Hardy-Wineberg definition, and you know, and you remember the criteria. However, it's difficult because of this double negative and which one does not. So please practice for the AP exam, because it will definitely be something, not just for the bio exam, but for all AP exams, especially for the natural sciences, not so much for the math, will definitely trip you up. And it's unfortunate, because sometimes the questions aren't that difficult. All right. So that was the last practice question. I hope that they were helpful more than they were confusing. I hope that they answered more of your questions or reassured you more than they created doubts or created frustration. It wasn't meant to frustrate anyone. It was meant to kind of help you go over what we just went over today, to see how much you remembered and how much you cemented, and to maybe pinpoint a couple of things that aren't so clear, that you haven't studied so well, or maybe even to reaffirm that you have been studying what you haven't studied yet, maybe you can move on to other topics. So I want to wrap up the session today with just maybe five more minutes of quick tips and tricks for the AP exam. And these aren't just tips and tricks for the AP bio, they're tips and tricks in general for whatever type of AP exam, or multiple choice exam in general, that you might be taking this year or in the near future. So the first tip, and it seems very stupid, but it's very true, do not study the day before. Okay? If you have been studying for months now, studying the day before isn't going to make a difference. What you know, you know; what you don't know, you don't know. And I know that sounds very stupid, but it's true. Cramming the day before will probably, in the majority of cases, I know there are some people that are exceptions and that studied better under pressure. I was never one of those people, and I think the majority of people are not. Certain of the, certain concepts take time to, to remember, and they take time to memorize, and they take time to understand. So if you're studying the day before and you're trying to cram a bunch of information in, the most likely thing is that you only get frustrated, you'll get tired, you're probably going to stay up late, and you'll get very tired, and you'll end up presenting yourself the next day to the exam, exhausted, basically not well-rested, and not in the best mind to concentrate and answer an hour or more long exam. So independently of whether you've been studying a lot or very little, my personal advice is do not study the day before. Take the day off. If you are one of those people that definitely cannot relax the day before, you have to do something in order to, to make sure that you're studying. Then get up very early, review a couple of topics that you feel maybe are not completely cemented, maybe vocabulary words that are very similar, and that's it. But that's just some personal advice that has been very helpful for me over the past couple of years. The other point, number two, is breathe, read, and answer. So I know that what we want to do when we're on a multiple choice exam is just jump right in and start answering. And this has a lot to do with the fact that we're, you know, we've taken, we've probably had about three cups of coffee, we're anxious and excited to just get it over with, we don't want to run out of time. So for those of you have, who have trouble managing your time, that's the main anxiety, is just not running out of time to answer all the questions. And so you, the main strategy for most of you to get in and try to read very quickly and get things out of the way. This is, for the most people, not the best thing to do. Before you start the exam or before you read every question, breathe, take about a second to yourself, concentrate, read the question entirely, and then answer. This is probably the best way, especially if this is the first multiple choice exam you've taken, or it's the first AP exam you've taken. There are many, many different books that you can read that have various different types of exam strategy techniques. There are some techniques that say that you should read the answers first, and then you should read the question. There are techniques that they, that you should scan the vignette and then just focus on what the question is asking you. All those things are great. If you've been practicing one of those techniques over the other and it works for you, I'm not, who am I to tell you not to stop using it? But for those of you who don't have much experience answering multiple choice exams or if this is the first AP exam, definitely the best strategy is to just breathe, read the question in its entirety, read the vignette in its entirety, and then try to answer the question based on the information that you garner out of the vignette. The third example, or the third tip and trick that goes along with the second one, is that always eliminate first and then answer. So again, we have a tendency to want to just jump to the correct answer. So we want to scan the answers and see which one jumps out at us. And that's because we're very, we want to use our instinct to kind of have a feeling in terms of what's correct. But this isn't very objective, and it's not very useful. We want to make sure the AP exam is meant to confuse you. It's meant to offer you the most correct answer. Sometimes you'll be reading the answers, and they all seem correct, and it's because they are. The, the difference between getting the question right and the question wrong is not choosing between one right answer and three wrong ones, it's choosing between the most correct answer and the ones that are not so correct. And so in order to do this, the only way to really do this very efficiently and effectively is to read all the answers in order and to start eliminating them. The AP exam, if you're taking it on the computer, there's a function where you can actually cross out the answers. So this was done on the last exam, I took it, it was already available. So it's probably still available, it's probably still done this way. You can start crossing out and eliminating answer choices as you go along. That's extremely helpful. It allows you to organize yourself, it allows you to make sure that you've completely eliminated a one option, and now you're only down to two or down to three or down to one. So basically, you get to the right answer based on elimination and not based on zooming into what seems right and then making a mistake later on. So this is also a personal, a personal advice. This is how I answer all multiple choice exams, and I've been answering multiple choice exams for about probably 15 years now at different levels, undergraduate, graduate, medical school, all these things. This will be a life skill that you'll definitely get tired of. Unfortunately, they placed a lot of emphasis on this. This is probably the most efficient way to get at it. And for those of you who are worried about time, this will definitely allow you to increase your response rate, because it organizes you mentally. So eliminate first, then choose the correct answer. And finally, answer even if you don't know for sure. There's no penalty for guessing. Before, I think, I still, I still took one of, I don't know if it was an SAT subject test or an AP exam, where they penal, they penalized you for answering incorrectly. So this is always kind of the, the mental fight that we had with each other, which was, do I answer or do I not answer some between two questions? And mostly the best, sometimes the best advice that they would give you was, don't answer, because if you answer wrong, it's a 50% chance of getting a minus one. Now it's not like this. Now you will get plus one for every correct answer and plus zero for answering incorrectly. So there's no penalty for guessing, and you just penalize yourself if you don't get. So obviously, try to guess strategically, meaning try to eliminate. And if, it's better to guess among three than it is to guess among four. It's better to be between two answers than to be between three, among three, I'm sorry. But sometimes it's not possible. You'll get some questions where you actually have no idea. Sometimes the AP exams have these kind of very random questions that they'll ask, which is meant to create a bell curve. So you'll find yourself, hopefully not guessing in the majority, but guessing on some. And the best strategy to apply is to guess. Try to eliminate, and if you can't eliminate, just guess. You have a 25% chance of getting it right. So these were my tips and tricks. I hope they were helpful. I know they were very general, but I wanted to offer you advice that would help for all your AP exams, not just the bio ones. In terms of the bio one, it's changed over the years, so I can't really offer you very specific advice for the bio exam. What I can offer you is the following. Make sure that you're reviewing information and content that you've been going over in class. Yeah? The reason why this is important is because if you've been going over it in class, it means that you've had an entire year of time to kind of think about it and review it, versus if you've just been going willy-nilly without any type of particular order with topics that you feel are important now. The best thing is to maybe take out your class syllabus and go over topics that your professor has gone over, has given you homework on. These are probably the most important topics that will be important after the AP exam as well, so when you, once you get to university or to college. So please try to get in order. The most important thing is to have an order. Start seeing, maybe testing your knowledge with practice. The best thing you can do at this point is to have a lot of practice questions and kind of maybe feel out what you have to brush over and what you can't have time to do. So this presentation was meant to kind of test your knowledge in a couple of vocab, maybe make you feel good if you've been studying, and hopefully offer guidance. Again, if you want to, if the practice questions were helpful for you, but we went through them too quickly, I will be offering, or this workshop will be offered again on the Fourth of May at 8:00 Eastern Time again. So if you want to log in again, not necessarily for the presentation itself, but for the practice questions, most definitely, you're welcome to come to join again and, you know, copy down the answer questions. And if you want to reach out, you want a particular, you want more advice, you want particular advice for bio exams, you can definitely look onto the WizEN platform on the tutor app there. You can look me up as Nicole Pena Arena. Cora has my information, and you can definitely get more particular answers from specifically through the WizEN platform. So I hope this was helpful. If you guys have any advice in terms of how to improve it for the next time, go ahead and leave it in the, in the chat. If not, well, I hope you have a really good night. I see people are asking a couple of questions. So what review books do you recommend? So this is completely, there's a, there's a lot of different options. There's Kaplan, there's Princeton, there's the actual, there's Barron's. I remember that when I took it, I think the best ones were Princeton. I think they had, they, they had the most dynamic books, I mean, they had the best diagrams, they had the books that were the most synthesized, which at this point, because you're relatively close to presenting the exam, you probably want a book or a review book that synthesizes information rather than gives you very lengthy explanations. The Princeton books also had a lot of practice questions integrated after each of the chapters, which is probably the most helpful thing you can do when reviewing for an AP exam, is to review the, the main vocab and review the main topics, but then test yourself. Test yourself specifically on that information to see how much you retain, to see how much you understand, to see how the AP exam tests you on different types of skills. For example, reading graphs, reading charts, inferring information, not just on vocabulary and memorization. So the Princeton review books are pretty great. However, any of these books, Barron's, Kaplan's, any of these books that have practice questions after each chapter, I would definitely recommend. But the Princeton ones are pretty dynamic, and they're pretty well-designed, and they're really, like, they're an easy read because they're really well. The diagrams are very clear, and it's not all boring and black and, and kind of crunched together. I don't know if there's any more questions. I'm going to stick around for about five more minutes or a couple of minutes more if there's any, if there's any last minute questions. So Cora's putting that WizEN is hosting several more AP exam prep sessions. That's true. So AP bio is not the only one. You can sign up for more. I think there's, there's Spanish, there's French, I'm not sure if there's, I think there's, there's chemistry as well. This one's, and they're given at different times, some, this one's going to be repeated on the Fourth of May at same time at 8:00 PM, so you're more than welcome to sign in again if you want. So again, if you want to go over some of these, these questions that we were going over, that I know we went through relatively quickly, but there's a limited amount of time. And I know that somebody asked me a question, and I don't remember exactly what, but they asked me to, "What's the difference between natural selection and descent with modification?" So natural selection, I don't want to repeat myself on end, but natural selection is this, this combination of environmental pressures. So for example, the foot, the cold changing the color on the trees, and allele frequency change, so the ability to pass on your information, so these moths that were passing on their information more frequently than the white moth, coming together to basically create a preference for a particular trait, whether it be, in this case, the moth color, whether it be the length of the neck, whether it be the length of the beak, and this is what natural selection produces. And it works on organisms. So it works on particular, in this case, we're talking about moths, we're not talking about general populations. With time, it becomes evolution. But natural selection works on particular organisms. So that's what natural selection is, is. Versus descent with modification, descent with modification refers, it just refers to passing on your information. So it refers that parents will pass on information to offspring. And the passing on of these traits is known as heredity, heredity. Yes? And so the passing on of a basic unit of heredity is a gene. So that's what descent with modification means. It means that you're going to pass on a particular gene to your child. And that particular gene encodes certain amount of information, maybe for a particular trait or not, but it doesn't necessarily have a lot to do with natural, natural modifications or environmental pressures combining with genetic information or genetic frequencies to produce a change in, in an organism. I don't know if that, if that makes sense. It's basically simply passing on information from parents to offspring, genetic information, versus natural selection, which talks about environmental pressures and genetic information coming together to favor a particular trait. I don't know if that, if that made sense, or if that was the question that was asked about, about half an hour ago. Let me know. I'm just cruising through the chat to see if there are any other questions that I didn't get to. So, do I also tutor SAT-bio two subjects? So, yes, I also do, I do all the bio-related tests with SAT two. I think there's also an ACT biology, or the, or there's a, like, there's a science portion on the ACT. I do do everything related to bio. The SAT, the bio-two SAT is very similar to the AP bio in the sense that it's a multiple choice that's related only to biology. The difference is that the biology for the SAT will, will ask you much more general questions, having to do with just biology in general, versus the AP exam, which is really meant to test a little bit more kind of your, your skills, not just biology, your biology knowledge, but it's meant to test your inference skills, your graph reading skills, your science and math abilities, all these different types of things integrated, versus the SAT, which is depending, I mean, it's changed over time as well, but it used to be a very much kind of a subject test, like, "How much do you know about biology?" But yes, I do tutor it. Any more questions having to do with the AP exam, which is a topic for today? I know there's a lot of questions on the SAT, but I just want to kind of concentrate on the AP, since this is an AP workshop. But I hope you guys leave some messages or some comments. Let me know what was helpful, what wasn't helpful, what was more confusing than helpful, just so that we can improve for the next time and make it useful for you, because you guys are the ones taking the exam. So if this wasn't helpful, let me know, because, you know, we can, we can change it, we can do more overview of topics, we can do more practice questions, we can change it a bit, so let me know. Okay. Well, I think that we're pretty much done. I hope this was enjoyable for you guys and helpful more than stressful. And again, study. Let me know if you guys need help. Sign on to the one on the Fourth of May if you need help again. And again, take a look at all the other AP workshops that are being offered the month, this last couple of days of April and beginning of May. Can, yes. So next time, yes. So there, this is an important topic. So there is a free response section on the bio, AP bio, and I can definitely go over maybe approaches to take in terms of how to answer these questions. So yes, if you guys want me to do that, I can. But basically, very quick answer, the best way to do that is to, is to really focus on, on analyzing the information and, and kind of answering the, the main question first, and then kind of working on your composition. So many people think that the long answer format is kind of like an, an English essay, and it's not, it's really meant to just kind of stress you out a bit, because it's an essay format. But it's basically various multiple choice questions put together, and you have to kind of, rather than choosing the answer, kind of put it together. So the best way to, to, to answer those is to analyze the information and start writing as you analyze it. But I can go over that next time, and I can give you tips and tricks and kind of approaches to answering the long free response questions on the bio exam. But that's a good, um, that's a good suggestion. Thanks for, for, for asking that. And I think somebody asked me what the difference was between homologous structures and analogous structures? So homologous structures, what was this example that I gave you between the different structures, for example, between the bird and the bat? So homologous structures are structures or body parts that are similar related organisms because they, they were inherited from a common ancestor. For, for example, the, the example I gave you between the bat and the bird, even though bat and the bird are different species, they have a common ancestor. They both have wings, even though the bat's wing is kind of, it's a membranous wing, and the bird's wing has feathers. They have a common ancestor, and therefore, they both evolved this type of wing appendage, or whatever you want to call it. Another example would be, for example, a whale and a human. A whale has a fin, and a human has an arm, even though they're both completely different structures, they serve the same function, right? The arm is meant to help us move, the fin is meant to help the, the whale move, and we're both mammals, even though we're very different. And because we, we have a common ancestor, we both evolved these appendages. And because we, we have a common ancestor, we both evolved these appendages that are meant to help us move. They're meant to help us, um, you know, garner a sense of, of our distribution in an environment, appropriate reception. So this is what a homologous structure means. Versus an analogous structure are structures that are similar in unrelated organisms. So for example, their structures are similar because they evolved to do the same job, um, not necessarily because they have the same ancestor. Um, so that, I don't know if that makes, uh, that makes sense. But all right. So, okay. Thanks for signing in. I hope you have a good night. I hope this was helpful. And again, if you have any more suggestions, feel free to contact me on the WizN platform. And I hope to see some of you guys soon. I hope you recommend this workshop to other, your friends or other students that are preparing for the AP exam. And thanks so much. Have a really good night.